You know about that guy right there, Marvin? Right there. Look at him.
This kid.
I don't.
All right, good evening. We'll call this meeting to order for the May 9th, 2024, Apple Valley City Council Meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting. As your items are called, please come forward and address the council at the podium. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead and ask the governor to rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
All right, the next item this evening is to approve our agenda. And Tom, do we have any changes?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Yes, we do have one additional item we would like to add to tonight's agenda. This item was pre-distributed to the council yesterday. This would be item 4W on your consent agenda. It's a resolution setting a public hearing for June 13th at 7:00 PM. And this involves a vacation of easements at 4629 144th Street. That is, in the Diamond Path area. So this is just setting the hearing for that night. Other than that, no action is required.
All right, so if we don't have any other changes, we would take a motion to approve the agenda adding item 4W.
Move.
Second.
Motion from council member.
Grindall.
Grindall. Second from Councilmember Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries. The next is our audience participation portion of the meeting. This is for items not on the agenda. Pam's telling me we didn't have anybody pre-sign up. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this portion of the meeting? All right, seeing none, we will move right on to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion, unless a council member or assistant requests to pull an item. And council members, are there any items you'd like to pull? Audience, any items to pull? Seeing none, we would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Brander, a second from Councilmember Grindall. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, consent items are approved. We'll move on to our regular agenda with item 5A, which is to proclaim May 15th, 2024 as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And Deputy Chief Dolestrom has this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. We appreciate a few minutes of your time on a really busy, crowded night. But we thought it was very appropriate to come to you today and ask for you to proclaim next week as Police Week and next Wednesday as Police Officers Memorial Day. And for us, it's very meaningful in our profession that we can that day and in our department in particular. It's a time for us to focus in and lean in on and remember the sacrifices that other officers have made in the line of duty. And we not only remember the officers, but their community, their family, their partners. And so it's important for us to remember that each year. And in fact, a number of our officers have stood vigil at our memorial up at the Capitol. They've traveled to Washington DC and participated in the National Police Week festivities. Festivity is probably the wrong word, but the very reverent services, the candlelight vigil, the National Memorial Service. And it's just humbling to see tens of thousands of supporters of law enforcement, uniform, friends, family, and just members of that community out in Washington DC. And so for us, we find ourselves especially somber due to the events of the last couple of months. And so we thought it was fitting to bring this forward to you for the first time. And we really appreciate the consideration and your willingness to recognize next week and the importance that it has for our officers and our community as well. So we appreciate it.
Thank you. I will read this proclamation, if that's okay. Whereas President John F. Kennedy declared the first Peace Officers Memorial Day on May 15th, 1962, to honor the service and sacrifice of fallen officers, and whereas the Apple Valley Police Department has provided professional and compassionate service to this community since 1964, and whereas peace officers work under difficult and dangerous conditions regularly, and whereas peace officers are assaulted and killed in the line of duty at an unacceptable rate across Minnesota and the nation, and whereas the community of Apple Valley continues to grieve the loss of Burnsville Officers Paul Alstrand, Matthew Rugi, and firefighter paramedic Adam Finseth. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Apple Valley, Dakota County, Minnesota, hereby proclaims May 15th, 2024 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and May 13th through the 17th, 2024 as Police Week in Apple Valley. And we invite the residents of our community to honor the fallen police officers and recognize the service given by our men and women who, night and day, stand guard in our midst to protect us, proclaim this 9th day of May, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve?
All together.
Oh, yeah.
All together.
Well, we have to call one of these, but we will know that everybody had support.
We just, we just lost four officers last week down south someplace. Four in one night. Unbelievable.
Happens all too often.
We have a motion from Councilmember Goodwin and a second from Councilmember Grindall. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I think that passes. I'm gonna walk this out and hand it to you as well. Thank you for all you guys do.
Appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, we are on to 5B, which is the introduction and oath of office, or excuse me, an oath of office for Police Sergeant Shawn Marvin, and Officers Jacob Kirchner and Nick Swanson and Chief Francis.
So I gave Greg the tough one. I get the fun one now. But I think it was great. We put that on the agenda for tonight specifically because we know we got a room full of folks that are here to support their law enforcement, family members and friends, and to see how our community supports them and how you as a council supporter support us all is very important. So thank you. And I will start with the fun festivities now, and I will welcome Shawn Marvin up. Shawn, if you want to come up. Shawn is a new sergeant. He grew up in Apple Valley. He graduated from Eastview High School. He is the second generation AVPD member with his father retiring as a captain from our department after 23-ish, 24, 23 years of service. And interestingly, you know, we've talked before about our patch and our badge and how it's kind of part of our identity. And your badge number is really important part of your identity, but what's really cool tonight is Shawn gets his dad's badge number that his dad wore. No pressure or anything, but. It's always something great for us to pass along. He started with AVPD as a community service officer, spent a couple of years here, and then was promoted to Police Officer in 2017. While at Apple Valley PD, he served as a patrol officer, field training officer, a very brief time in our CIU unit, and a member of the South Metro SWAT team. And I'll let Shawn introduce anybody that's with him tonight.
Yeah, so here are my wife Nicole, my daughters, right there through the door. Nicole's mom, Joyce. My mom, there's Robin, who's my brother-in-law's mom. My sister, my dad, Dave right there. That's my brother-in-law's dad as well. Then Randy, Clinton, and Jen, Clinton. That's Nicole's parents, or stepmom and dad.
Perfect. And I think we have an oath that we're gonna do first.
Shawn Marvin. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Minnesota and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Police Sergeant of the City of Apple Valley in the County of Dakota and State of Minnesota to the best of my judgment and ability.
Now we'll have you invite up whoever's pinning your badge on for you.
Hopefully he knows how to do this. Maybe he's done it a time or two.
Don't screw this up now.
I turned it on to, you know? This is bringing back a lot of memories. I spent a lot of Thursday nights in this.
Yes, you did.
Yes, you did.
Did you learn anything?
Well, I realize now it's kind of like flying Economy Basic. You don't have a whole lot of room in these.
Pressure's on.
All right.
Take up a moment of the city council's time. Nick isn't even aware of this, but I was part of the team that designed the badge. And when we designed the badge, I have the original design, and I'm gonna pass it on to Shawn. It means a lot to me, and I just want you to have it. And if you notice, it was because I was on a design team. It says Sergeant and it says Badge 6. So this is kind of a little historical.
Oh, is that nice?
Very cool.
That's nice.
Next, we'll invite Officer Jake Kirchner and Officer Nick Swanson up.
Gotta go again.
Not yet. I'll introduce them first here, so. Officer Jake Kirchner first here. He grew up in Maplewood, graduated from Tartan High School. He attended Minnesota State University Mankato, which is also my alma mater, with a degree in law enforcement. And he worked, he had some great experience prior to coming here. He worked as a Dakota County Sheriff's Deputy for six years prior to coming here. So we've infused a lot of, a lot of experience here with both of these. While at the sheriff's office, Jake was a canine handler and also a member of the South Metro SWAT team. Outside of law enforcement, he likes to play hockey, so we're building up our ranks for a hockey team. We got two lines at least right now, so. Plays softball. He also enjoys spending time outdoors with his dogs. And I'll let him explain or introduce anyone with you.
My father's there in the back, and my mother's there with my wife, grandfather-in-law, my father and mother-in-law.
Excellent. And now Nick Swanson. He grew up in Duluth, moved to Rosemount in about middle school and is a graduate of Rosemounts High School. He attended, again, Minnesota State University Mankato, common theme here. And he's got a degree in law enforcement, and you two went to college together. What's interesting is when I was looking at the background, actually it was Jake's background, looking at the background and I'm like, man, that address looks familiar in Mankato. That address really looks familiar. Well, we lived in the exact same house in Mankato on 326 and 1/2 East Walnut Street.
Yes, sir.
Yep. Nick spent eight and a half years with Rosemount Police Department as a community service officer and police officer. While at Rosemount, he was also a member of the South Metro SWAT team. So all three of these folks that were up here tonight have spent some really difficult training experiences and good bonding experiences as members of our South Metro SWAT team. Outside of work, Nick spends most of his time with family and friends, going outside to hunt and fish, and also playing hockey. So we got another hockey player. And Nick, who's with you tonight?
I got my parents, front row here, with my girlfriend, friends, family, ex-co-workers.
We always do appreciate when we, when we do, we call it steal folks from other agencies and and we love to have, have their friends and they're all acquaintances and friends of us come to, come to support all these folks as they take on an oath at a new department. So I will invite you guys over to take your oath.
Please raise your right hand and greet with me the old city office.
Aye. Aye, Nick Swanson. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Minnesota and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Police Officer of the City of Apple Valley in the County of Dakota and the State of Minnesota to the best of my judgment and ability. So help me God.
If you want to invite up, invite up the folks that are gonna. If anyone else wants to move up and take pictures, feel free to. Thanks for the time tonight to introduce these folks. As you probably know, there's no perfect department in the state of Minnesota. There's no terrible department. There's no perfect department, but there's the right department for everybody. And so we really appreciate these guys trusting in our department, giving us an opportunity to be their right department. And so for their families, I know it's a jump to go to another department to go. It's not necessarily a career change, but it is a big jump. And so we appreciate their family support and everybody else as we, as we welcome them into our community here in Apple Valley. And if you would allow us, after we're done here, a little break to go and take some pictures, I'm sure there'll be a mass exodus.
There'll be a mass. We'll give everybody a little time to do that. Chief, thanks for the introductions. Officers, welcome. Shawn, congrats on the promotion. Glad to see the, glad to see you continuing with Apple Valley and some pretty big shoes to fill, probably both figuratively and literally, right, in this case? So just everyone in the room, thanks for being here tonight, supporting the officers and the families. We're super proud of this department and the things they continue to do in big and small ways every day. So you guys stay safe and welcome. Hold a little minute to exit and find their way out and enjoy some fellowship outside.
For our athletes, the bodies.
Hey, the little kids did that. Good. I already gave Joe a little good heads up, thumbs up.
All right, we will move on as the evening gets much less exciting from here. No offense, Joe, but we have some special assessment roles for items 5C and D, and Joe's gonna walk us through these.
All right. Hello, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. In terms of revisions to the assessment role before you tonight, it has been deemed appropriate to exclude property ID 010340076020 associated with Paul's Market located at 6885 160th Street West and the amount of $5,625.63 from the current assessment role. Removing this property from tonight's role will provide staff with more time to review stormwater charges related to this property. Any delinquencies connected with this property after the review will be brought forth to a future assessment role. The City of Apple Valley undergoes certification of delinquent accounts twice per year in spring and fall. The process for the spring certification started with the mailing of letters to water sewer account holders with delinquent balances. A total of 692 letters were mailed on February 27th, a slight decrease from the 710 letters sent during the previous assessment period. The letters informed recipients that the account is not settled by March 21st would be certified for collection along with a certification fee. Following the March 21st deadline, a certification list was compiled and presented to the council on April 11th. At that time, the council set a public hearing for tonight. Additionally, a notice was mailed on April 16th notifying account holders of the public hearing date and payment deadlines. To date, one written objection has been received regarding property ID 013215001171 situated at 15743 Fremont Way, the amount of $505.24. The affidavit of publication has been received and is on file. Following the public hearing this evening, and if the council adopts the assessment role, the account holders will have an additional 30 days to make the full payment before any unpaid amounts are certified to the county on June 14th. Any amounts certified to property taxes will become payable alongside the subsequent year's property taxes. The final list, lessening prepayments, will be submitted to the county auditor's office by June 30th, as stipulated by Minnesota state statutes. The initial certification list presented at the April 11th meeting indicated a balance of $160,684.99 across 379 counts. While in the exclusion of Paul's Market, the revised figure now stands at 378 accounts with a total of certification amount of $155,059.36. Additionally, as of today, a total of $32,707.36 has been received from 74 accounts, leaving a remaining balance across 304 accounts. We anticipate another 25 to 50 accounts will prepay prior to certification with the county next month. The city council has asked to conduct the public hearing for Special Assessment Role Number 693 and consider the adoption of the resolution certifying for collection delinquent utility charges in the revised amount of $129,933.8.
Thank you, Joe. Do you want to have questions for Joe on item 5C? If not, we will go ahead and open the public hearing for the 2024 Special Assessment Role Number 693. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Anyone like to speak to the item? One final opportunity for 2024 Special Assessment Role 693. All right, we'll close the public hearing and we'll take a motion to adopt the resolution levying the assessments.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Goodwin and a second from Councilmember Brander. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that item carries. And we'll have Joe come back up and talk about 5D, which is the 2024 Special Assessment Role 694.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. These charges are the result of these trees at one property in June of 2022. The resolution total is $371.38, reflects the unpaid charges on the one parcel, and no prepayments have been received. notifications for Role 694 were sent out along with the letters for Special Assessment Role Number 693. The affidavit of publication has been received and is on file, and no written objections have been received to date. The city council has asked to conduct the public hearing for Special Assessment Role Number 694. Following the public hearing, consider the adoption of the resolution certifying for collection delinquent hazardous tree removal charges in the amount of $371.38.
Perfect. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing for 2024 Special Assessment Role Number 694. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Would anyone like to speak to item, this item? One final opportunity for Special Assessment Role Number 694. All right, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and we'll take a motion to adopt the resolution levying the assessments.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Bergman and a second from Councilmember Grindall. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries as well. Thank you. All right, next up we have Alex Sharp with 5B, which is the Applewood Point of Apple Valley, second addition. I'm not gonna make any comments whether this is ready or not. I already stepped in it once tonight, so I'll just let it go.
Good evening, Mayor, council. As stated, this is a item for Applewood Point, second addition. They are seeking three actions. The first is to amend Plan Development 1080 to correct some typographical errors, as well as add some clarifying language that I'll go into a little bit later, and then subdivision by preliminary plat into seven single-family lots and a site plan building permit authorization for the seven single-family lots, as this is part of a multifamily development. Site is located in the northeast corner of McAndrews and Pilot Knob Road. As you can see, the overall site, Applewood Point, is a 98-unit co-op. You'll see some better photos of that a little bit, but that is seven and a half acres. And then Outlot A, which is the area that is highlighted with the site, is 1.14 acres. Site is zoned PD 1080. It has two subzones within it. The ordinance does affect the entire site, which is why it was all selected on the screen here, but the actual subdivision will only be of Outlot A, which is that smaller section. We happen to have some really great photos of Applewood Point because we had our State of the City yesterday, so I chose to include those within the presentation. It is fully leased and people are fully, I shouldn't say leased, but fully owned, fully purchased. It's a co-op. And I believe most of the residents are in at this point. Dave Young with United Properties would be able to elaborate on that further. He is present this evening. The area that is looking to be subdivided currently is kind of in that hill section you're seeing just south of Drayton Trail, which is the private drive bifurcating the site. This was the site plan that was approved on October 8th of 2020. The reason why I want to bring this up is, and linger on it for a moment, is just to highlight that these seven single-family homes were anticipated at that time. They did not receive their approvals at that time, but from original submission all the way through our final approvals, including our building permit materials, we did note that there was going to be these villa-style homes. This is the preliminary plat, and because of the details, I actually have one that's zoomed in after this. As you can see, the smallest lot is 5,920 square feet. They are planning on having these association managed, so there will be association that'll do trash, snow removal, yard waste. They will have their own irrigation systems individually for each home, but they will be managed by the association. Rather than go into every detail on here, I'm gonna try to go through them relatively quickly in a summary format, but if council does have questions, I can go through them in greater detail. So one of the big things that needed to be changed about the ordinance was the permitted uses stated that townhomes were permitted. Our code defines townhomes as having an attached wall with another single-family unit. Because these were detached in a villa style, we did the amendment to be more consistent with the rest of ours zoning, which has the one-family detached dwellings. Additionally, one of the only other items that I wanted to kind of highlight, or I should say two items that I wanted to highlight, was I changed, or staff had proposed a change, and the applicant was open to changing the front setback. Originally, the front setback was from a sidewalk. Traditionally, we have that from a fixed point, like a property line, so we changed that, and we changed it from 20 to 25 feet to allow for a full-vehicle parking on a driveway. Since parking will be limited on the site, there are some parking stalls accounted for along Drayton Trail, but we really wanted to be cognizant of having family over, visitors, et cetera, and being able to fit them in a driveway. The second piece that was kind of highlighted at the planning commission is the impervious surface coverage. These were set by essentially looking at the stormwater, because this is a private stormwater system on the site. And so in cases like this, similarly with cobblestone, we can actually exceed what is standard throughout the rest of the city. We've set that at 55%. That does allow for expansions, patios, et cetera, for some of these homes. So it is accounting for these, the life cycle of the home, not just the original build. The utility plan has not changed from what was approved, so not gonna spend. their narrative as well, which is in your packet, tries to stick with similar features and peaks as the Applewood Point project. So you'll see similar dormers and architectural elements that are trying to go and keep a cohesive development. This will be a LP smart board or other type of material. Robert Thomas Holmes has said that it was going to be the LP smart board, but we have placed conditions that it must be at that slightly higher material, because this is the multi-family development. If you want me to linger on any of these as I go through them, I can, but I'm going to move through them relatively quickly. There were a couple of comments at the public hearing. The principal one was to do with traffic. Traffic was extensively studied when Applewood Point first came forward, and in fact, most of the residents, or I should say, all of the comments at the public hearing were from residents of Applewood Point and were in favor of the project, but did want to express some traffic concerns or suggestions, and those were addressed largely at the public hearing by the city engineer. The PC did close that public hearing at that initial meeting, and then unanimously recommended approval on May 1st. With that, I can stand for questions. There are three actions this evening, and we are recommending waiving the second reading of the ordinance, as they were only minor corrections.
All right, council members, are there questions for Alex? If there are not, we will call Councilmember Goodwin.
I just have a point to make. That stretch of McAndrews right now is 55 mile an hour. It's ridiculous. Coming up the Pilot Knob Road from the east, the speed limit's about 45. And many, many years ago, that was set at 55, just to the east of, just to the east of Pilot Knob going up the hill. And I've talked to our county commissioner about this a couple of times, and I've talked to our staff about this. Hopefully, there's going to be a study of this road, because with all these, all these homes here now, and then a golf course, and then the subdivision south of it, to have that stretch of highway be 55 miles an hour is just ridiculous. You have any idea where we are on that right now?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Goodwin, we have had recent conversation with the county, and as you'll recall, speed limit studies need to be done by the Minnesota Department of Transportation.
Well, I've been hearing about this for years now.
The Koda County has petitioned MinDOT to do that study, and they have that many in the queue, if you will, that they have not gotten around to this one yet. Still planning to do it, it just hasn't risen to the top of the list yet.
So you don't have any idea when it's going to be done? A lot of people coming and going from that big building up there, and now we're going to have seven townhomes, and it's 55 miles an hour. Just ridiculous. All right, we're going to move on with the action items here. I don't think the, the speed limit is going to stop us from approving these items this evening. No, no, they're totally separate.
All right, so the item of...
Maybe if we approve them, the speed limit changed.
The first item is to pass an ordinance amending chapter 155, Appendix F, Article 39 of the City Code regulating planned development design designation, number 1080, and we recommend waiving the second reading. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Councilmember Goodwin, a second from Councilmember Malander. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries. We'll move on to number two, which is to adopt a resolution approving subdivision by preliminary plat of Applewood Point of Apple Valley Second Edition, subject to conditions.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Grendel, a second from Councilmember Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And item three is to adopt a resolution approving site plan building permit authorization for seven single-family residential units on lots 1 through 7, Block 1, Applewood Point of Apple Valley Second Edition, subject to conditions. Motion from Councilmember Bergman, second from Councilmember Malander. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that item is approved. Thank you, Alex.
Thanks.
All right, we will move on to staff and council communications. Tom, I know we had a couple items we talked about, would you like to start us off?
We do. Mr. Mayor, a couple of items for tonight's staff updates. So on your consent agenda tonight, which was item 4L, we had a proclamation designating May 5th through 11th as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Didn't want that opportunity to go past, that, you know, we are blessed that we have Pam as our city clerk, and we also have two deputy city clerks, Stephanie Marshall and Janee Martin. But I also wanted to highlight that Deputy City Clerk Stephanie Marshall just earned her certified municipal clerk certification, and you get that through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. It's a pretty extensive program that really seeks to improve job performance. It's a well-respected group. They have to do a lot of educational programs to prove that they have the knowledge that they need to earn the certification. Currently, there are over 4,500 certified municipal clerks worldwide, and only two, or I'm sorry, only 72 in all of Minnesota, and we have two, one being Pam and one now being Stephanie. So just wanted to highlight that and congratulate Stephanie on her designation. The next item I have, we had earlier, those that are just starting out their career in the police department, I also want to say some words about Nick Francis, our police chief, who had quite an honor bestowed on him here this past weekend. So Concordia College, where Nick has been serving as faculty for some 15 years, I believe, at this point, has really done a lot to develop the police profession, to encourage students along their way, and Concordia decided to honor Nick by giving, or bestowing on him, an honorary Doctor of Laws degree, is what they call it. That ceremony just took place here this past weekend. Really, it has done so much to generate excellence in the area of public service, it's done so much in exercising his leadership skills and helping to bring along that next cohort of students. So with the council's permission, we actually have a video, oh, Nick's presentation. It takes about four minutes. Hopefully, the technology will work here. Let's see if we can pull that up, and this talking is the president of Concordia in St. Paul.
Grew up in South St. Paul, Minnesota, as the youngest of 11 children. Lots of names in that family. In that loving environment, Nick was influenced to serve his community from a very young age. From volunteering at Trinity Mission in St. Paul, to leading his high school service program, serving others was at the core of his existence growing up. After high school, Nick attended Mankato State University, obtaining a bachelor's degree in law enforcement with a minor in natural resource management. Nick went to work for the Apple Valley Police Department as a patrol officer in 2000. He focused much of his influence on his department in training. Outside of his patrol work, Nick worked with the Police Enforcer Explorer Program, preparing students for a career of service. He also instructed fellow officers on a number of police skills such as radar and laser operation, firearms and taser use, field sobriety testing, and drug recognition evaluation. After being promoted to sergeant in 2006, Nick wanted to improve as a leader and mentor. He decided to pursue a Master of Arts degree in criminal justice leadership from Concordia University St. Paul and graduated in 2008. His service mindset, combined with an advanced degree, has elevated Nick through the Apple Valley Police Department to his current role as chief of police. Teaching has been a dual passion of Nick's since beginning his career, and he has been involved with CSP students since 2010. During that time, Nick has assisted students as a residency mentor, capstone reader, course developer, and adjunct instructor in both the bachelor's and master's criminal justice programs. Nick connects with students as lifelong learners prepared for a career in selfless service to their own communities. Nick and his wife Kristen have two sons, Brayden and Nico. As a volunteer youth hockey coach in Apple Valley, Nick has enjoyed teaching his boys and their friends not just hockey skills, but life lessons on how to be a good friend, an honest person, and influential leader. The faculty of Concordia University St. Paul is honored to present Chief Nicholas Francis with the degree of Doctor of Laws. Nick, will you please step forward?
Regents and upon recommendation of the faculty, has conferred upon Nicholas Francis the degree of Doctor of Laws, with all the rights, honors, and privileges, as well as the obligations and responsibilities that everywhere appertaining to that degree. In testimony where we have hereunto subscribed our names cause to be affixed, the corporate seal of Concordia University St. Paul on this day, Saturday, May 4th, 2024.
Mr. Mayor, we have an amazing police chief. Wanted to share that with you. He does so much for our department as well as for our community, so congratulations.
Seems to extend beyond our community, I think.
Mayor, I have a, I have a question. Do we call him Doctor Chief? Which one is it?
Thank you, there you go. Well, Nick, some of us kind of hope the people that come behind us, right, are ready to step in the roles as we all move on. I think you're making sure that the people that come behind you do, and that's pretty honorable, so happy to see this and happy to see the recognition, so. One other item I just want to note here on our agenda consent, we have a lot of things to celebrate, it appears, in May, for those people who just make our city run, right? We have Police Week to recognize our city clerks. May 19th through the 25th is also Public Works Week, and I didn't want to let the evening end without also recognizing all of our folks in Public Works. I will just read a quick excerpt from this proclamation, which we approved earlier, right, which just says that, whereas the infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, employees from local governments and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for citizens. And that pretty well wraps up, I think, what our Public Works folks do for us, and make sure all of the things we need every day runs. Thank you to all of them as well. Anything else, Tom?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I don't think we should leave tonight with also acknowledging the State of the City, that just was held this week. Our mayor did an amazing job with the State of the City. I also want to thank the staff members that helped to put that together, our communications team did great work getting some of that video footage and photos from aerial shots. Charles Graub was, of course, instrumental in working on the corporate report that we did, and then certainly all of the department heads that contributed video segments to the State of the City. It's very well done, was captured on video, and actually may be viewed now on the city's YouTube channel, so if you go to the city's website, you can access the State of the City. It runs about 45 minutes or so, and we would encourage our citizens to take a look. It's a good story to tell, tells what accomplishments of 2023, and things to look forward to here in '24 and beyond.
Tom, thanks for recognizing that. Thanks for recognizing everybody who made that come together. We were very literally making edits at 4:00 PM the night before to keep pulling new things in, so thanks, everyone, for their effort in putting that together.
Then the other news you announced yesterday was Nordstrom Rack is coming to town.
Yes, that was...
That was even news after it was put together.
That was, that very much was news, and we don't always know everything, right? And every tenant that looks to Apple Valley and finds Apple Valley valuable, but that was, I picked up my, my email version of the VIS Journal that morning and read that Nordstrom Rack was taking the old Bed Bath &amp; Beyond space, and so we're happy to see them, and we'll look forward to welcoming them as well. So, yeah, that was, that was good news. Also makes these really hard when you have to keep editing and adding things at the end, but hard in a really good way, so. Councilmember Goodwin?
Well, I just wanted to comment, follow up on Mr. Llewells' comments. The State of the City presentation yesterday was excellent, Mayor, and all the staff people that added to it, just never seen one like that. It was just really nice.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmembers, anything else? All right, our next city council, regular city council meeting is Thursday, May 23rd at 7:00 PM. Do we have a motion to approve the calendar of upcoming events?
So moved.
Motion from Councilmember Grendel, a second from Councilmember Malander, and we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion from Councilmember Bergman and a second from Councilmember Grendel. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Have a great night.